Good evening. Oh, good evening. It's good afternoon. Jumping ahead of myself here. Good afternoon and welcome to the July 11th work session. I know the manager has a particular introductory comment he wants to make.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just want to introduce Paula Hurtwig-Hopkins, who is our interim Central Services Director. You might remember, Sucha George was filling in for a period of time. And while we go through a regular recruitment process over the many, next many months, Paula has agreed to fill in. It's a similar model you might remember with David James, who had filled in at the interim police chief. And so this is a similar kind of a model. And Paula, if you wouldn't mind coming up and just introducing yourself, saying a couple of things.
Thank you, John. Mayor and members of the council, thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. I arrived Saturday night and started Monday, and I traveled about 1,900 miles to get here.
Welcome.
Had a few, thank you, had a few stopovers on the way. So it's a pleasure to be here. Started Monday. John has done a great job of briefing me. Wonderful staff, wonderful city. It's a walkable city, and I'm used to that. Spent a good part of my career in Columbia, Missouri, where the flagship University of Missouri is located. So we had a great park system, too, and I commend you for all you do. So it's a pleasure to be here. Thank you for this opportunity.
That's great. Welcome. We're happy to have you.
Thank you very much.
For introducing yourself, and we look forward to working with you more.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks.
Okay, so we are ready for picture plan play.
Well, good afternoon. My name is Carolyn Burke, and I'm with the Parks and Open Space Division. And I'm really excited to be here today to begin a consideration of adoption of our new Parks and Recreation System Plan. We've been working with you along the way, so there's no big surprises in this plan, but it is exciting to be at this point. So I'll just start by summarizing the vision that we have for Parks and Recreation in this community. So the vision for Parks and Recreation in Eugene is a system of beautiful, inspiring places that foster personal, community, and environmental health. And basically, this planning document does what it can to unfold how to make this happen. So that's the vision, and then the steps to make that happen are in this plan. So what I want to do today is just give you a high-level overview of the plan itself, point out some areas that will, I think, be of interest to you. And I do want to say that we, with this plan, we wanted it to be both rich in content and in graphics. And we wanted it to be inviting to read and inspiring. And I think we've done that. We had some great help from Planning and Development with Jennifer Knapp, who did the graphic design for us. And so it's an attractive document as well. So moving through the document here, the first chapter is really the background, and it talks about what are the benefits of Parks and Recreation in Eugene, gives an overview of our system, talks a little bit about the history. We talk about our principles and our goals for the system. And the four principles that really we came upon early on in this development process as we talked to the community were to care for and make the most of what we have, to serve the entire community, to create more connections, and to build better partnerships. And those continue to be the guiding principles that will guide us through We talk about our partners in this plan, both on the recreation side and on the park side. We could not do the things that we do every day without literally the hundreds of partnerships that we have. Moving along into Chapter Two, this is where we talk about the development process of the plan and the needs assessment. In other words, what are the strengths, what are the challenges, and what are the trends that we should be looking forward to? Community engagement-wise, we talked to over 12,000 community members throughout this process. We won two awards. The first was from Harvard's ASH Center for Democratic Governance and Innovation as a bright idea, and that was for Little Red. And this is that trailer that we use to go out into the community, find people where they are, engage them in fun and creative ways. And we continue to do that every summer, and it continues to be a great way to connect with the public. We also won an award for our work we did with the Latino community. We won the State of Oregon's 2017 Achievement in Community Engagement Award from them for the work we did, again, to go out to the Latino community, meet them where they are, and engage them in fun and creative ways. We did a slew of other engagement as well that I won't go into. And, but basically, that engagement did result, then, in this long-range, 30-year vision, which is described in Chapter Three. And so Chapter Three is really where we get into kind of the meat of the plan. Recommendations are organized into four different categories. So there are recreational facilities, natural areas, developed parks, and connections. And I'll just give you a highlight recommendation from each of these to give you a sense. So for recreation centers, this is where we talk about community centers, we talk about pools, and some of our other auxiliary and leased facilities. So for instance, we have recommendations for Sheldon Pool and Echo Hollow Pool to renovate and expand each one of those to improve our service delivery. And as you know, we're quite thrilled to be able to move this recommendation into the implementation column through the passage of the bond measure this May. And we have other recommendations as well. So we have a recommendation to build a brand-new community center and pool in two neighborhoods that are currently underserved. So that's the Santa Clara area. You can see the asterisk, the red asterisk, in Santa Clara, and then also in southwest in the Churchill neighborhood. So those would be brand-new facilities. The next category is natural areas. And I'll just point out, throughout the document, there are these quotes that appear. And those are quotes that were collected in our engagement process with Little Red. We had a little recording station where people could tell stories about their experiences in Parks and Recreation. And so these are just little snapshots of those recordings, and they're really fun. And it's an opportunity for us to highlight some of the fun imagery we have of our parks as well.
From the burger.
Perhaps both.
Faster.
So for natural areas, that encompasses both habitat, trails, waterways. And so, for an example, for trails, our recommendations were primarily pulled from the 2015 Eugene Trails Plan. All that work is very recent. It's very relevant. And so we were able to fold all those recommendations right into this plan. For Willamette River Access, this was something we heard early on in the process, where people just wanted better access to the river. And so we've actually begun looking at how to do that. And so the map on your right is kind of a list of opportunities that we have found throughout the system. There's still feasibility that needs to be done and things like that. But there really are a lot of ways that we can improve access in a variety of different ways. So those are identified there. And then moving on to developed parks. Developed parks encompass everything from your neighborhood park to ornamental and community gardens, dog parks, golf and disc golf, skate parks, mountain biking, restrooms, furnishing, public art, and more. There's a lot in there. And so this is a big component. For example, looking at our playgrounds. So the map on the left shows both our existing and proposed playgrounds throughout the community, the asterisks, the orange asterisks are new playgrounds. And there's a number of them. And that's because we have a goal of having a playground within one-half mile safe walking distance of every residence. And so we've done the analysis, and that is what it results in, where we need additional play areas. We have recommendations around sports fields. And so again, this map shows both existing and proposed. And the yellow asterisk up in the northwest corner is in the Golden Gardens area, where we have talked about a new sports complex. And we've done some feasibility around that. And also, there is money for Phase One of that sports complex in the bond measure. So we'll be doing some more public outreach around that particular project soon. And the final category is around connections. And connections are the bike paths and even the streets, the green streets, the neighborhood greenways that help get you from your home to these places. And so we look at those connections, both on a neighborhood scale, how do you find safe access to your neighborhood park, but also we look at it at a system-wide scale. And so this map, I think, does a good job of showing some of the connections that we currently have. So if you think about the Ridgeline Trail, you think about Amazon Creek leading into the West Eugene Wetlands, the Willamette River system. But with the dashlines, you can see that there are both some gaps that need to be filled and some new connections. And the purple one in particular around the northwest kind of corner of the town is what we call the Farm Belt, which is looking to make a connection from the river over to the Fern Ridge Bike Path and West Eugene Wetlands system. Just, it's about equity, and it's about kind of having a connected system so we can get around well. The final chapter is implementation. And so in this chapter, we talk about funding, we talk about priorities and how we establish the priorities in the plan, and we talk about strategies for implementation. Of course, the recent passage of the levy and the bond measure put us well on our way towards implementation, so that's very exciting to already be in that position. But before we wrap up, I do want to also mention the appendices, because there's actually a lot of really important information in here as well. For instance, we talk about each one of the different planning districts. We have six different districts that we have divided the community into. And for each one of those districts, we have an inventory of the current Park and Rec facilities they have. We have a gap analysis about what's needed, and then we have recommendations. So for instance, this is for Santa Clara, we have a map and an accompanying spreadsheet, and those projects are linked together through code and color. And we identify the priority and the costs for all of these projects. So before we are completely done, I wanted to mention a modification to the plan that you have in front of you that we will be making. And that is related to a name change request that came in in the process, where we were originally thinking that we could consider that name change request through the adoption of this plan. But in consultation with the city attorneys and looking more closely at the city's naming policy, we decided it was better to separate those two processes. So we'll be coming to you at a later time to follow up on that request. And so it was referenced in the plan, and so we're just going to pull that out of the plan. It's very minor modifications, and we will have a new plan for you before you have to take action or anything by Monday. So our next steps, Monday on July 16th, we will have a public hearing and potential action. And just also a heads up that later this year in the fall, we will be coming to you with a revised SDC methodology for your consideration as well. So with that.
Thank you very much. And I will just say that, having just sort of thumbed through it and not read it thoroughly, that I am impressed with how beautiful and readable and accessible the document is. So congratulations on that. I think it's great. And thank you for this summary to give us a sort of a quick look at how to get through it. So do I have anyone in the queue with questions or comments? Mike?
I...
Chris?
Emily.
Got it.
I want to say thank you, first of all, very much. That was, this is lovely. It's laid out, easy to understand, wonderful document, and I appreciate the work, because you guys, now with the passage of the bond and levy, are doing and able, as you mentioned, to implement an awful lot of really great things. And they're very high priorities for people in our community. Parks and Rec is a big part of their lives, and it's a big part of living here. I would say, again, that I'm hopeful that in future years, unless it requires a council action of some nature, I'm hopeful that staff will bring us closer together with plan discussions, plan implementations, and SDC methodology. So that when we're having, before we passed levy and the bond, we were talking about this planning process and could have had a different conversation about, here's what that will cost. So that we, when we're having a conversation about a housing crisis and the cost of building housing, we can say, we want to have an amazing park system and a park and recreation programs, but we also have to balance that against what does it cost to do it. And with not seeing the SDC methodology changes and what that, I'm going to guess, likely increase in Parks' SDCs will be, we don't know the cost yet. We don't know the true cost. And we don't know the cost in difficulty-finding housing, affordable housing. So I hope we can bring those dots closer together in the future as just a staff policy. Thank you.
Yeah, I think your point's well taken. I think there's, oftentimes, a planning doesn't presuppose the financing of the plan. And so with any of the plans that get put together, whether it's parks, it could be any type of plan, it really tries to identify the needs that the community and the council identifies are important. Sometimes it prioritizes them, sometimes it doesn't. And then, as we move through the discussions over the months and years, it's, how do you implement any particular parts of those plans, and then what becomes the funding mechanisms? And so I do think during those conversations is where those connections are made as we're thinking about how to implement the plans.
And I appreciate what you're saying. And for me, that's how we have always done things, and it's understandable, and it's a reasonable way to act and to plan and to proceed. However, from my perspective, I would like to see us do it differently. When we were talking about City Hall several years ago, we had a conversation first about budget. This is how much money we have. How much City Hall can we get for this money? And then this council changed that discussion to, well, here's our values and the plan we want. What will it cost to get to that? Similarly, we would have an entirely different discussion if we said, we don't want Parks' SDCs to go up at all, so that it doesn't impact housing. What kind of Parks and Recreation plan can we get if we don't increase Parks' SDCs? That's a different kind of conversation. And I'm hoping that we can get them closer together so that we can have at least more conversations that connect the dots about the impacts of our planning. And I mean, it's good to have the appetites for these services, but they cost something. And I'd like to see us have the more connected conversations. Thank you.
Chris?
Thank you. I'm really impressed with the work you've done so far. There's a lot of things that I would want to compliment on, but just a couple that jump out. One is your community engagement process. As you know, engagement's a very big deal for me and how to do that effectively. And I really like the models and strategies you've put in place. I would love to see us be able to use more of those models and strategies in other kinds of community engagement processes that we use. So I think you're really developing some best practices in that area, and I really like that a lot. I like the report a lot. I like that you're trying to make the effort to figure out what the balances are, both at the macro level and at the micro level. I mean, Mike raises good points about figuring out, is this about what we aspire to or about what we can do? It's like, you know, should do, want to do, must do, kind of a thing. And we have to help give you guidance on what that is, because you can't just do it without getting some sense of us, where that is in the priority. And we have to kind of do that work and guide you. But with what you've already got, I think you're trying to create as much balance as you can, not only a balance in the larger sense of the city's overall budget, but also within this plan, in terms of balancing north, south, east, and west, or at least trying to figure out what is a good and appropriate balance. And using the bond measure to help to facilitate that is a really, is a really great thing. I like that a lot. And so I'm very supportive of what you're trying to do. We can definitely help you with providing a little bit more substance, some clarity and certainty around what it is you can try to do. And I think it would be good when we can begin to move in that direction. But this is a lot of infrastructure. And people don't tend to think of parks as infrastructure, but it is. And we've made a significant investment in that infrastructure, and so we're obliged to take care of that infrastructure. And I'm not talking about adding a lot of new infrastructure, although that's a valuable thing to do, but taking care of the infrastructure we already have, I think, is a significant piece of it. And I noticed that that's part of what this balance is. And I think there were times when we focused less on maintaining the infrastructure than we did on just making it bigger and bigger and bigger. And I think you're getting back to the notion that, yeah, you want to make it bigger, but you also have to take care of what you've got. And I'm very appreciative of that. And I think as you build that into these plans, they become more responsible and more accountable. That's why I like that. So the degree to which we can help you, I think that will be something that we will really need to do. But with what you've already got and what you're already trying to do, I think you are pursuing a good balance. And I appreciate that, and I thank you for it.
Emily?
Thank you. I think the graphics on this are excellent. I read it this morning, and I felt like I understood it. And I really, really appreciate when communication is clear like this. And I think it's accessible to any reader, really. So really good job. Kudos on that. I love the maps. I'm wondering if there's links to them where they can be expanded, you know, so I can see closer in. I think that would be really helpful for me and other people. Put it on a bigger screen. So thank you for all that. My comments are a little more specific, having just read it. So some of these are just my thoughts, in no particular order. I saw that we're going to need a lot of new parking. With the CMO, CRO, I think we should look into permeable surfaces. It's a chance to start from the beginning without ripping something up and needing more concrete. So that could be a leading-edge thing. I really appreciated the mention of a significant playground downtown, and it occurs to me that Keyzey Square would be a really super spot for that. We could put in the safe surfaces, some trees, some plants, and it would attract children downtown. I'd like us to consider that. On my crusade for more off-leash dog parks, I see that we have a goal of a half a mile to play areas. I would like to also have a half a mile to a place to let my dog run around. As we increase density, any green space is going to be more and more important. And people are not going to stop having dogs just because they're living close together. More restrooms? Yes, yes, yes. More benches. Betty and I have been talking about benches since before I started this. And we say we want them, but they're not there. Monroe Park has plenty of concrete pads where there's no benches. Downtown, don't want people sitting on the sidewalk, but we won't put in benches to get them off the sidewalk, because we don't want them to be there at all. But I got a piece of pizza downtown. I wanted to sit down and eat it. The only place I could find was with Ken. Yesterday, we were having a meeting in park blocks by the fountain, and at 4:00, the ambassadors came and packed up the chairs. So that wasn't very inviting, and we had to move. So that would be great, more benches. I'm really happy to see the new urban forestry plan. We need more trees everywhere, more plants. This is a good thing for the CRO. And I'd like to see it be implemented as much as possible when we're taking care of our parks. And I need a second round, please.
Claire?
Thank you. Well, thank you for this wonderful draft plan and for all the work that you and your staff have done to bring us to this point. And I want to particularly congratulate you and the other staff members on the two awards that you received, validating the work that you put in to getting community input on this important piece of our city's infrastructure, which is something I wrote in my notes before Chris spoke. So I absolutely agree that this is part of our infrastructure and incredibly important to the livability of our community. And I think the effort that was put into developing this plan reflects that and reflects the value that we, as a community, a council, and city staff place on this infrastructure. And I think even in its draft form, the responsiveness of this plan was critical to the public support we received for our bond and levy measures. And so I'm really proud of the work that we've done here. And I would expect that your department would continue to do that important outreach as we get into the particulars of improvements in a community park, development of unimproved parks, or any changes that we might be making. And I know you've got a process right now for Scobert Park in Whittaker, and I'm hoping that's generating responses. And I know it's generating some rumors that I'm hearing right now, and a little bit of concern about maybe selling off part of that park. So I do know folks are concerned about those kinds of ideas. So I want to make sure... I would like to also have a half a mile to a place to let my dog run around. As we increase density, any green space is gonna be more and more important, and people are not gonna stop having dogs just because they're living close together. More restrooms? Yes, yes, yes. More benches. Betty and I have been talking about benches since before I started this. And we say we want them, but they're not there. Monroe Park has plenty of concrete pads where there's no benches. Downtown, don't want people sitting on the sidewalk, but we won't put in benches to get them off the sidewalk, because we don't want them to be there at all. But I got a piece of pizza downtown. I wanted to sit down and eat it. The only place I could find was with Ken. Yesterday, we were having a meeting in park blocks by the fountain, and at 4:00, the ambassadors came and packed up the chairs. So that wasn't very inviting, and we had to move. So that would be great, more benches. I'm really happy to see the new urban forestry plan. We need more trees everywhere, more plants. This is a good thing for the CRO. And I'd like to see it be implemented as much as possible when we're taking care of our parks. And I need a second round, please.
Claire?
Thank you. Well, thank you for this wonderful draft plan and for all the work that you and your staff have done to bring us to this point. And I want to particularly congratulate you and the other staff members on the two awards that you received, validating the work that you put in to getting community input on this important piece of our city's infrastructure, which is something I wrote in my notes before Chris spoke. So I absolutely agree that this is part of our infrastructure and incredibly important to the livability of our community. And I think the effort that was put into developing this plan reflects that and reflects the value that we, as a community, a council, and city staff, place on this infrastructure. And I think even in its draft form, the responsiveness of this plan was critical to the public support we received for our bond and levy measures. And so I'm really proud of the work that we've done here. And I would expect that your department would continue to do that important outreach as we get into the particulars of improvements in a community park, development of unimproved parks, or any changes that we might be making. And I know you've got a process right now for Scobert Park in Whittaker, and I'm hoping that's generating responses. And I know it's generating some rumors that I'm hearing right now, and a little bit of concern about maybe selling off part of that park. So I do know folks are concerned about those kinds of ideas. So I want to make sure that, you know, if we get to any place of those kinds of considerations, that we're being very deliberate and have a lot of public process and opportunity for people to weigh in on those.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
Alan?
Yeah, this is great work, Carolyn, and everybody on your team. I mean, evidenced by the passage of the parking rec bond and levy by more than 60%. Just shows the work that you guys did, plus the awards that you've won. And then the amazing work that you guys did on public involvement. I imagine that your colleagues within the city sneer at you now because you set the bar so high. But I think that's a good...
They all want to borrow Little Red.
Yeah, I bet they do.
Yeah.
Right, right. And the other ideas that you guys came up with. I think the plan's easy to read. It's pretty. It's easy to go through. It has tons of information. The maps are really good. The graphics are great. Are the maps online? Is there a whole, is this whole thing online?
This whole thing is online. I will verify whether or not they can be expanded. But yes, the entire plan is online.
You have an iPad there?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's great. And I love the notion of a half a mile to a play area for everyone in the city. I noticed the new set of swings in Hendricks Park just the other day. So I also appreciate the appendix and going through each part of the city and saying, here's all the things that we have on our wish list. I'm wondering if you have a total for the total wish list for everything that's...
Total cost?
Yeah. If we were to say, okay, let's build everything in here, what would the total cost?
About $380 million.
That's actually not out of the ballpark. 380 million, great. Also, there wasn't a specific section in this, but how does this relate to the CIP? And then the CIP has a requirement to meet the CRO. So how does that, those connections and nexuses work with this plan?
I would say the primary connection is through the priorities that are established in that plan. So when we look at the projects, we identified whether they were Priority 1, 2, or 3. And again, it's a 30-year plan, so each priority would be approximately 10 years. And so when developing that CIP list, we look at those priorities and say, well, what are the projects that we've already identified as Priority 1? And from there, prioritize further, because obviously, we can't fund all the Priority 1s in one CIP. And so it gets us kind of at a macro level, the list of projects to start with. And then through continued engagement and conversations with you, we begin to narrow down those to identify what goes in the CIP.
Yeah. So are the Party 1s, Party 1, are those the ones that got into the bond and the...
Yes, yes.
So if they're 1, they're already funded?
No. It's a partial list, a Priority 1 that is funded.
That was the bigger, the biggest piece of the pie, biggest pie that we didn't put on the ballot.
Exactly.
That would have been all the Priority 1s.
Yes.
It was about half?
Uh, yeah, about that.
Speaking of pie, this used to be my favorite graphic in the whole thing, but now I've actually become a little bitter and jaded about it, since we still haven't gotten any pie, Carolyn.
We did get pie.
We did get pie. You must have not have been there.
I missed that.
Got pie.
Okay, pie, Alan.
There's no pie today. Not pie.
So somebody owes me a piece of pie.
Okay, you got it.
You worked every...
I know.
Yeah, every time you do, it's not the expectation I'm trying to set here.
Every meal, we need a pie.
Pie graphic, pie served.
Once in a while.
Okay, so any other comments? First, you wanted a second, any other first round comments? Okay, take it away, Emily.
Thank you. We did get pie, and maybe when this gets passed, we should definitely have more pie.
There you go.
Let me know of that. So back to my list of small comments. I saw Amazon Community Center could use some upgrades, and there was an A and a B, and one was renovate/upgrade, and the other was demolish. And I'm really surprised, since I've been told it's cheaper to rebuild than, I mean, to remodel than to rebuild. And there's a lot of concrete we have to use again, so I'm a little skeptical of that plan as being a good idea.
We would definitely look at the feasibility of that. And the concept there was that we would actually expand Hilliard Community Center, which is very close. And by doing that, there may be some operational efficiencies in running one community center instead of two. But the detailed analysis of that has not taken place.
Okay, thanks. Well, I have a red flag there.
Yep.
And speaking of new community centers in parts of town, the city, how about downtown? You know, we don't have one, and we're using the library instead. I feel it's a real need. We also need a youth center. Maybe they could be connected to have two uses in one building. And since community centers seem to be under parks, I think that's a reasonable request. And then more generally, back to what we were talking about on Monday, about our new Riverfront Park, I'm sure that we'll listen, read the many parameters in here that will be important, such as natural areas and not too much concrete. We need them for our health and for the CRO. And again, as we get denser, that green space is more and more important. And this is a chance where we have, we're creating green space on Old Brownfield. So we need to remember that this is one of the places we could actually increase it. And my last thing is, we have a big problem with park safety and people camping there and leaving trash, and especially on the river, they're really hurting the riparian zone. It's costing us money, and we want to improve both downtown and the riparian zone. So how about we give people a place to sleep besides the river and the downtown sidewalks? I passed a guy today, just in a door, just sort of slumped over. He was clean. He was, just looked exhausted. There's many, many other people downtown who do not look exhausted. And I just felt so helpless that there was no place for this person to go and sleep. So we all know that that's a core issue for me, but I think that it's attached and interactive with our parks. We want to make them safer, more inviting. Well, let's give an inviting place for the people that need to sleep. Thanks.
Thank you. Betty, did you want to comment?
Yes, thank you. First, I wanted to say that the CIP, I think, is a capital improvement program, right? The CRO is climate recovery ordinance, in case anyone wanted to know.
Thank you.
Thanks, Betty. Part of the mandatory acronym law.
About community centers, I would hope that they're not as open and welcoming as they used to be, the ones that we have. This happened with budget cuts back in '97, I think. But I would hope that they'd be places where people could go and sit and have a cup of coffee or actually feel welcome. And I think it would be really bad to get rid of any of them. I would hope that Westmoreland would be restored to a community center, which it isn't now. And I agree that we need more of them. And they should be places where people can have meetings and meet friends and all kinds of things. I'm concerned, connecting the CRO to this, I just saw leaf glors across the street when I came to the meeting. And I think that's not very environmentally good. We could have people get exercise by sweeping and raking leaves instead of using, instead of polluting with leaf glors. And I hope that will come into the planning, that the climate recovery ordinance should be considered in all the planning, I think. And minimization of concrete as far as possible. I get upset when we pass a school bond and they use it all for concrete, making big parking lots on the school grounds. Anyway, that's all I have to say about it. I know parks are really important, especially to people who don't have their own yards, and there are more and more people like that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Greg, grab his hand.
Oh, Greg, great. Take it away.
Hey, Carolyn, thanks again. I haven't had a chance to go through the full document yet, because I've been distracted with a few other things. But I want to come back to something we talked about in some separate meetings earlier, and that is the gender equity piece, because we are still, in how we're addressing that, because we still have some significant gaps between facilities for girls and women and what we currently have in our inventory. And I want to make sure that we are addressing those deficiencies as we go through the implementation of this bond.
Yeah, and in our conversations, I'm remembering, we were talking about softball fields as one, and certainly through the development of a sports complex with significant softball fields, I think that would begin to address that issue. Were there other facilities?
Well, you know, I know that there's some deficits in volleyball and some others, a lot of things that are kind of taken up by Lamalane, but, you know, we should have, you know, mirrored or similar kinds of facilities, access facilities, for girls' and women's recreation on this side of I-5.
Yeah, so the indoor facilities.
Yeah, and indoor facilities, too, that could be, you know, part of, you know, further community center development, like at Echo Hollow or at Sheldon.
And we have included that in the plans for many of the community centers, that they would actually have gyms associated with them. Right now, our only community center with a gym is Sheldon, and it's a small gym.
Very small.
And so we've talked about bumping up that, and Peterson Barn adding a gym, and Amazon as well. So expanding, yes, through the existing indoor facilities that we have.
Because, I mean, there's just virtually no place for girls to even practice, let alone, you know, play games.
Thank you. Betty, you need to...
Greg forgot to do a disclaimer that he's the father of a girl.
And there are a few other parents of girls around.
Me, too.
There are a few other daughters. Yeah. Okay, everybody have all their questions answered? Thank you very much. Look forward to the public hearing and seeing what the public has to say, and thank you for your good work.
Thank you.
Okay. And now we are ready to make a transition to review the, where we are from the council retreat.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Jason Dedrick with the City Manager's Office, here today to close the loop with you on your council retreat that you had in February. So what I'll be doing is refreshing your memory a little bit of what work you did in February, talking a bit about what staff's been doing since then related to this, and then also mapping out what we're looking at going forward from here. So to refresh your memory, we had two retreat sessions in February, February 10th and February 24th, that were here in this room. We started off on the first day by discussing what went well in 2017, so I'll touch on that in a minute. And you have a handout at your places that refers to that item. Then some time was spent determining what areas of focus you would like to have for the next 12 to 18 months. You had a lot of discussion about those topics, and I'll review that here in a minute. And then also talked at both the first and second session, your primary action was identifying outcomes for three areas of focus, homelessness, housing, and public safety for the next 12 to 18 months. You also have a document at your places that summarizes all of those outcomes that you talked about. And then finally, what I'll introduce today is what our next steps are to address those outcomes. And so a third handout that you have at your places is a blue, green, and tan document that is contained in the slides, but you can refer to that as well. So the first item that you undertook was to talk about the recipe for success. There were a lot of baking and cooking analogies, so we've carried that forward. It started with talking about what projects or efforts you felt like went well in 2017. And you created a list of projects. And then we dug a little deeper with you to examine why it was that those went well, in the hopes that we could replicate that recipe for success on future projects going forward. And so I'll just quickly review what those items were, that those things that you felt made those projects successful. So a focus, when we're focusing on areas where we come together as a community, when we're listening to the community, and beyond just listening to the community, are we listening to new voices in groups or groups that we don't traditionally engage with? We're successful when we have a clear role for the city on a given project. When we increase communication, when we have good plans around communication and engagement with achievable goals. When we're open to new ideas. When we work successfully with our partners, noticing that most of our work requires partners and is not typically things we can do alone. And that there are ongoing and regular updates to City Council throughout some of those projects that you felt like were successful. We had a lot of touch points with you from the staff perspective. And then finally, when you have projects that have a vision and we're moving towards it, those are ones that you feel are the most successful. So what we're going to be doing going forward is keeping this list at the front of our mind at staff as we're going forward with any of the work that we're doing and trying to build these in, because we see these as what you've identified as the recipe for success. So following that work, prior to the first session, we asked you for three to five areas that you felt like would, should be primary areas of focus going forward. That generated a list of 10 items that more than one of you brought to the table on your list. And so these are those 10 items. Through the course of the first day, we had you meeting in small groups, trying to narrow that list down to three to five items. At the beginning of the second session, we then were able to bring that down to three items that were areas of focus going forward for the next 12 to 18 months, which are homelessness, housing, and public safety. We talked a lot then, and will also mention today the difference between areas of focus and priorities. So these were items where you felt additional policy guidance was needed, or where staff were looking for additional guidance going forward, maybe where we don't have clear policies or don't have clear plans. So these were areas where there was benefit to trying to focus staff's efforts over the next 12 to 18 months. It does not mean that we prioritize those over any of these other items, and it doesn't mean that we stop working on any of those other seven items or many of the items that aren't on this list. So the intent of your work was to provide more focus on these three items. So before I talk about the three items in particular, I wanted to mention a couple of common themes in your discussions that reach across all three of those areas. The first is communication and community engagement. And this is obviously a clear theme on a lot of the work that we're doing. But what can we learn from processes that have gone well, such as what we were just talking about with the Parks and Rec System Plan? How are we looking at community engagement across all the work that we do? The content, is it going to matter if we're not communicating it well and if we're not getting good feedback and engagement from the community? So that's a core theme across all three of these areas. Also was your desire for more integration and connecting the dots between efforts. So you have multiple work sessions on any given topic, and sometimes you've expressed the concept of, if we pull on the thread here, how do we know what the impact of pulling on that thread is over here? Or if we're talking about a specific project at a work session with you, you want to know, if we take this action, how does it impact that thing we talked about last week? And so we're going to be working hard across these three areas to make sure that you understand how various topics are integrated and to help connect the dots, both for you as well as for the community, so that they can understand how these things are related that sometimes don't look related. Okay, so starting with housing, all of your input around outcomes is essentially reflected in this word cloud. So you talked about a lot of different things related to outcomes and reached beyond outcomes in your discussion. And so this is just everything that was there. There's some interesting things here, obviously housing, but the words affordable, market, barriers, changes, needs, interesting words that we heard multiple times from you. So what we tried to do was then take all of this information about outcomes and whittle this down to a list that contained a lot of what you shared. And the product of that are these bullets that relate to outcomes on housing that we're proposing going forward. The first is to meet the needs for various housing types for the right people in the right places. This is an umbrella item. It contains a lot of various topics that you talked about as outcomes. Measuring progress against the regional context, so understanding what's going on around us and how that relates to our decisions on housing. Reduction in the housing cost burden. So that's more than just what we're doing on the housing side. It also relates to economic prosperity, the Baker's Dozen List that we've been working on for several years. It's about how do we create an economic situation where individuals can afford housing? So it's both... So it's both, this bullet includes both ends of that issue around housing affordability. And then finally, an outcome of upholding the Invision Eugene pillars. So with these four outcomes going forward, we wanted to bring forward also all of the things that we're already doing that are in service to these outcomes. There are things that we're doing and some things we'll need to do new. So our current efforts that we will continue to maintain at the staff level include implementation of our consolidated plan, continuing work on affordable housing projects, neighborhood planning, growth monitoring, downtown housing projects, the creation of the Comprehensive Plan Housing Chapter, and various economic prosperity projects. And so these, I don't think I have one more. No, I don't. So these items are the ones that we're already in progress on, and we will continue our work because they are in service to those outcomes that you identified. And so going forward, there may be new areas of focus that we need to pay attention to or embark upon to meet those outcomes. For all three of these items, housing, homelessness, and public safety, there is a larger systems-level project that is happening that makes sense to happen first, understand sort of the larger structure of things that may suggest additional projects going forward. And so for housing, that's the housing tools and strategies process. That's the process you've outlined. It's a synthesis of multiple topics and work sessions with a six-month timeline and some funding allocated to that. And so that will come back to you this winter. And so what that is, is really sort of a systems-level look at multiple things around barriers to housing, affordability, diversity in housing type. It brings together a lot of different individual projects, and it will suggest a series of individual projects coming out of that. And we don't know yet what those are. But clearly, those efforts will help to address those outcomes that you've identified. There are some additional things that we will continue to work on. That includes increasing the number of land bank sites, creating a sustainable local source of affordable housing income, and implementing urban reserves. And so those three, in addition to whatever comes out of that housing tools and strategies process, represent sort of the key efforts, key pieces to the puzzle of how we address the issue of housing. Important to note that all of these puzzle pieces have links to each other. And again, that gets back to that point that we understand that integration, and we'll be using this framework when we come back to you at the staff level to say, how is this project related to that? And how is it advancing the whole, and what are the connections there? So we're mindful of that, and we will continue to do that. So moving on to homelessness, again, taking all of your discussion about outcomes, putting it into a word cloud, these are the words that you use to describe the outcomes you're looking for. So interesting to see the obvious connection there between homelessness and housing is right there. People, the fact that community is there, talk about shelter and partner and needs, so a lot of great feedback there around outcomes. And so distilling this all down into a series of outcomes produced this list. An increase in the number of known places to sleep or shelter as an outcome. Integrating housing into the discussion. Increase in non-shelter programs, so that would include things like day centers or other services. And then City Council commitment or focused strategies, so you've talked about wanting to have very clear things that you're working on that represent your commitment to homelessness. And then finally, sort of the ultimate outcome, a decrease in the point-in-time count, which is something many of you shared during the retreat. So again, with these outcomes, there are things that staff are already working on to advance these. Those include our efforts around youth homelessness, implementation of the consolidated plan, which has projects related to homelessness, your ongoing human services funding, which funds cahoots and all sorts of other services, continued implementation of the Community Development Block Grant Program, coordination with regional and state partners, I should also say local there as well, because homelessness is an issue that requires this ongoing coordination, and so we continue to do that. Temporary shelter options, that includes the rest stop program as well as the overnight parking program. So these are the efforts that are already ongoing that we will continue in service to those outcomes. In looking at new areas of focus, similar to housing, we have a very large sort of systems-level effort going on right now, which is that systems map of homelessness in our community. This is the work associated with the Public Shelter Study, which is the Technical Assistance Collaborative, or TAC, that the city and the county have jointly contracted with. In particular, the systems mapping portion of this work will help us to identify where we have gaps in our community around homelessness, where we have overlaps, where are the, and then individual entities can use that information to say, if we want to take a role in homelessness, what's our best play? Where might we have the most leverage? Where might funding bring the most benefit? And so that systems mapping process will be in draft format this fall to be finalized at the end of the year. There'll be a strong engagement component to that. But what that will do, again, is suggest a series of projects going forward. It will give you a better roadmap to decide what are the key projects you would like to show as the city's commitment to homelessness. In addition to that, that work will suggest targeted efforts going forward around potential public shelter. Also, an additional effort ongoing right now, creating a sustainable local source of affordable housing income. And so those efforts, again, we will be looking for ways to tie those together, to show the linkages between them. I can envision that when staff comes back to you on a particular aspect of homelessness, that we'll be able to point to where in the systems map we're talking about when we talk about a certain effort related to homelessness, to make it more clear where we're working on this issue. And then finally, looking at public safety, this was the word cloud generated by all your discussion around outcomes on that. Community looming large there, obviously the importance of police on this issue, public, regional, downtown, again, people showing up. So again, we took all of this information regarding outcomes and whittled it down to this list of key outcomes going forward. So improved Eugene Police Department relationship with the community. Increased capacity, that includes Eugene Police Department partners as well as the judicial system capacity there. And that also, that increased capacity bullet also includes a focus on prevention, which you mentioned strongly in your retreat. Increased safety, as well as the perception of safety, and sometimes those are two different things. And increased regional partnerships, just the issue of how linked public safety is with things that are going on regionally. So once again, we have things we're already doing that we will continue to do to address those outcomes. That includes the Downtown and Parks Safety Initiative, the Downtown Youth Initiative, EPD's recruitment and retention efforts with several vacancies they're looking to fill, the Vision Zero work, wildlife code updates, as well as the work you've been doing on rat prevention is a good example, animal services work, 21st Century policing, and work on the Chronic Nuisance Code. So all things that are ongoing now, and we will continue to work on around public safety. In looking at areas of focus going forward, once again, we have a larger systems process-level effort that's ongoing right now, which is the Community Justice Systems Option work. And so you're going to actually be getting an update on this work next week, but more formally, that will return as a final product to you in the fall. And again, that's looking at the entire system in a way that will help suggest what the best efforts are going forward. And so once again, there will be pieces of the puzzle, new projects that will likely arise from that effort that makes sense to wait for that effort to be completed. Other work is ramping up now around downtown public safety efforts. That's something that's new and ongoing, and that relates to discussions that you had at your retreat. And again, the linkages will continue to highlight where in the system we're working when we're working on things. So in terms of next steps going forward, as we talked about, all three of these areas of focus have a key effort that's ongoing right now that's going to suggest some work. So that Community Justice Systems Option work comes back in the fall. The homelessness work with TAC will also come back in the fall. We're working on a work session where they can come and present directly to you this fall. And then the Housing Tools and Strategies work over the winter. And so we will also be continuing to work to develop metrics for all of these outcomes. We want to know if we're turning the dial or not in a way that we're doing work that makes sense for these outcomes. So with that, want to turn it over to you for any questions. Basically, again, we want to make sure that what we brought forward is consistent with your impression of the work, what you were thinking, and see if there's anything that wasn't clear or anything that you think might be missing.
Thank you very much. You've taken a lot of information, a lot of thoughts, and distilled it down into something that at least I think I find I can wrap my head around, at least. And so I'm eager to hear what people have to say. I have Mike and Betty in the queue, and Claire. Okay, take it away. Take it away, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the report very much. Well done. This was a conversation with lots of things written on big boards all over the room in several groups, and, you know, there was an, I mean, distilling that stuff down into actionable items cannot be an easy process, but you did a good job with this. The only comment that I have is one that is, I suppose, kind of flavor of prescriptive things moving forward oriented. It's often, the outcome of small groups' work, for example, is often kind of predetermined by the members that you choose to be a part of a group. So a lot of times, how you choose your wording for goals and outcomes kind of presupposes the work that you'll get to. For me, some of the things that are listed here capture, I think effectively, the council's discussions around how to move forward and what outcomes you'd like to see on particular issues. But there are holes for me, and there are notes that aren't quite hit as accurately. For example, number one, in the housing areas of focus moving forward, two of the four of those are about subsidized housing. So half of the work moving forward, by the way it's laid out, would seem to be about subsidized housing, and that's not even close to the major focus from my standpoint. That's not where the real effort to make a difference in making housing more affordable to the community would be effective, from my perspective. That's a very small piece of the larger conversation. And I see, you know, the housing tools and strategies part, I know is pretty all-encompassing and could come back as a major part with lots of things to talk about that could make a real difference. I grant that, that's true. But things like, where is the city, actually its own worst enemy, in the goal of seeing housing more affordable, would for me be a worthwhile conversation? Where, in what we require, are we creating the reality of slowing down the process of seeing enough housing get built, for example? In the homelessness section of areas to focus with as we move forward, I see some good things there, and I know that the planning work in the first blue arrow there will lead to several items that will be good. But all of this seems to be around, for example, the prescription of how to serve people better as opposed to how should the city stop enabling people who don't want to get well? I think we have a duty to serve people who want to get well and help them in the process of becoming housed. But in no place do I see, how are we part of the problem from enabling folks who don't want to get well? So those are my additions to what I hope we will talk about.
Betty.
Okay. I find myself agreeing with Mike, even though he got ahead of me one more time. I agree that the groups, the way we did that, that was determined by who was put into groups. I agree with that. And I don't really like the idea of the small groups so much. We're a small enough group, I think. But I didn't, at this long meeting, what you're calling a retreat, it's just like, I don't like to say affordable housing when we're really talking about subsidized housing. I don't like calling it a retreat when we have an extra-long meeting. But at our extra-long meeting, did we talk about urban reserves? I don't remember that. I don't remember that as being one of the things we suggested.
There was a little bit of, I mean, there were some notes about that, and that's why, you know, that was highlighted as something going forward. It wasn't an extensive discussion.
I didn't think that was, okay. And I want to know what's meant by animal services? Does that mean catching people?
Just the work that goes on with our animal services staffing.
It's not services. You're talking about giving fines.
Well, it is about the entire suite of services that the animal services, part of our EPD, do provide. And so we do, we provide spay and neuter for people. We also support sheltering for animals as well as subsequent adoption of animals. We provide, we do provide some enforcement as well. So we provide a suite of services for animals.
Spay and neuter does sound like a service. I wish I'd known about that. I paid for somebody to spay and neuter their animals. Anyway, and the nuisance code you mentioned, I've been waiting for that to come up for many months now, and I hope it's.
It's this month.
Only six months? Oh, in six, we're going to do it in six months?
No, 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 this month.
This month? Really?
Before break, yes. It's on the agenda.
Thank you. That's all.
We can reschedule that, though.
We can postpone it, right?
That's what I'm hearing, is the need to reschedule it.
All right, Claire.
Thank you. So when my dog got out by accident, animal services picked her up and kept her safe till they could return her to us. Though we'd get a fine for her getting out of our yard, but they do a lot of positive things. So, and actually, thank you, Jason, for bringing this back to us in this forum. I do feel like it reflects at least my recollection of our discussion and where we landed with these three areas of focus. And I appreciate the framework that you've created to capture how we can expect to bring those pieces back to council and actually inform our policy discussion at this table. And I actually don't have too much of an issue with how you've laid out the areas of focus, because I think you, as you did your presentation, you said that projects list are projects that are already being done or things we've already identified. There might be some specifics in there that will change as council continues to have discussions around those. But I don't think you've listed anything new on the projects list that this council already, hasn't already said, yes, we are looking at that, or we want to work on that more deeply. So I don't feel like you've tried to point us in any particular direction with these lists. I will share, I'm a little bit over the word cloud images. I've never really found them to be that particularly informative, and I find them kind of gimmicky. So that's just my opinion. I know they've been all the rage for about the last decade, and I actually haven't really understood why. So that's just my opinion. I just offer it out there.
Second motion.
So maybe there's some psychological reason why we're supposed to get something out of them, but I just don't. So otherwise, I really appreciate you bringing this back to us and helping us kind of look back on this discussion we had, which I think was very important, whether we call it a retreat or a workshop, I don't really care. I just care that we do the work, and I appreciate you bringing it back to us for us to move it forward.
Let's see, Chris.
Thank you. I'm really appreciative of your effort to try to consolidate all of the different things that you heard in the meeting, and I'm kind of impressed with the way you managed to distill it into what you had so far. Yeah, word clouds, they're cool. But unless you have like a big word and smaller words, these are all the same size, so it's eh. Anyway, with regard to the areas of focus and the stuff you prioritize, it's very clear to me that when you get down to the point where you're bringing, where you're trying to figure out actual proposals and what we want to do, you know, get confirmation on some of these things, we'll have to vote. Head nods don't work anymore. It's really hard for us to reach consensus, so you'll need to bring us a defined list of things we need to vote on. And I think that will give you the clarity and the certainty that you're looking for. This is really good, but figuring out how to translate these into a series of actionable voting-type items, I think, will be a real critical connection to moving from theory into actual action. I think in looking at some of these areas of focus, for example, around housing, I think that the line between subsidized and affordable and different kinds of housing is becoming really blurred. And so I think we need to figure out what kind of housing we're talking about when we do talk about each one of these, because you can't just use the word subsidized anymore, because I think there's nuances to that, because some affordable housing has subsidized elements to it. And so you have to figure out exactly how that works. And so as we move down there, I think it'll be good to strike more clarity for there. Moving into public safety, I like the stuff you've done here. I think the Community Justice I think community justice is exactly where we need to go, because it's the balancing element once again. But I think downtown is great, but I would love to see an additional line under here that talks about neighborhoods and transportation corridors, because this summer, for example, I'm experiencing an enormous amount of increase in activity in my ward, because my ward includes a major transportation corridor between the coast and I-5. And, huh?
Sorry.
And so I think we need to be cognizant of the fact that there are also these problems going on along specific defined areas in the rest of the community, and consider that as well as part of the overall effort. So I would also look at that. But I really appreciate the work you've done, and I think trying to herd these cats has been an interesting process, and I think you've done a pretty good job so far.
Alan.
So if you were going to do a word cloud on my comments, it would be well done, good job.
No more word clouds. We hear you.
I really appreciated you taking what, one of the issues I always have with retreats or advances, or whatever you want to call them.
All the meetings.
That they, or meetings about meetings, is that they don't get follow-up. And what gets done in there sort of either peters out or gets lost. And I really appreciate what, the way that you laid this out, Jason, in the three areas that we're focusing on, that here's what we're trying to do, here's what we're doing, and here's what we're going to do, in all three areas. And I think that makes it really clear, and I agree with the mayor, it makes me able to get my arms around each one of these a little bit better. It's not, they're all gigantic issues, and they're all important issues, but they're also issues we've been working on a long time, so there's other new stuff that we're going to be doing as well. So I really appreciate the way you laid this out, and I think it creates a good work plan for us, and also a good touchstone for a council to come back to and say, how are we doing? What's coming up next? And what are the things that we can do or work on as a council to move the lever on each of these three big areas? So, good work, well done.
Emily.
Thank you. I wasn't here for the first retreat, so I appreciate the list of successful methods, but I don't need it now. I'm wondering if I could get a list of which things counselors felt were successful and that those came from. The little groups aren't on the recording, so that would help me.
We'll do that.
Any other comments?
I just, I just wanted to add one thought that was, you know, one of the questions that I had going into those retreats was some of the things that we do, like, are we going to do them forever? You know, like rest stops, are we going to do them forever? And so, you know, part of, I think, certainly my intention was to sort of have some framework in which to sort of understand, how would we evaluate whether this has been a good endeavor in the long term? How does it relate to our other endeavors? And I really, so I really just want to reinforce that I appreciate this layout. And I personally do not have a problem with word clouds, because I think sometimes it does help, especially if you don't remember the meeting, how many times people repeated the same word, you know? So it's maybe better than a list. But, so I'm not, you know, sharing the disgruntlement with the word clouds. Do with that what you will.
Doesn't say missing middle on here.
It is Eugene. We should be used to clouds.
We should be used to clouds. We live under clouds.
One more word of caution for you, Jason, given Carolyn's experience, going down the road of recipes is good, but you start to go into cookies, and that might set up.
Oh, boy.
Pie, pie.
Word of caution.
Okay.
Snacks as metaphors. Let's work with this.
Snacks as metaphors, that's good. And snacks as snacks also works really well. Okay, I think that takes care of it. Thank you very, very much, and we are finished.